Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This morning, we have decision-making on previously heard measures. And I'm happy to see Vice Chair Stanley Chang, Senator Favella, Senator Joyce Sanbuenaventura. I'm having trouble with my teeth this morning, and they're all where they're supposed to be, and Senator Nishihara. And I'm expecting, and in the room with me is Senator Riviere. And we are expecting Senator Decoit to join us. And Allison, if I'm going to do some of these vote sheets, I forgot to bring them again. Can you bring me a pen? Okay, all right. So we have quorum, so we are going to proceed. And the first item on our decision-making agenda is Senate Bill 2073, Senate Draft One, relating to telehealth. This allows for standard telephone contacts for telehealth purposes. The chair recommends, there's a lot of moving parts in this bill, and I think it's very important that we pass over a good bill, one that really addresses the concerns that were made. So Chair's recommending that we defer decision-making on this one to February 23rd, 2022, at 9:30 in the morning. Can we, can we do it at 10 o'clock? Okay, would that be better for you, Senator Riviere?
I like 10.
Okay, well, change the recommendation and defer decision-making on Senate Bill 2073, Senate Draft One, to February 23rd at 10 a.m. Make it, make it a little bit easier for everybody. Okay, um, the next item on our agenda this morning is Senate Bill 2276, Senate Draft One, relating to acupuncture. This makes some modernization in scope of practice titles, licensing, and renewal requirements for acupuncture practitioners, including 30 hours of continuing education per licensed biennium. Chair recommends that we pass this measure with amendments that we received from the Board of Acupuncture regarding the CE requirement in Section 9. Add in a new section for reciprocity and technical non-substantive amendments recommended by SMA. We're going to delete Section 11 and accept the clarifying language from HMA for Section 4. Any questions or comments? Let's see, is that one of the bills you have, Senator Riviere?
SB 2276?
Yeah. Okay, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Okay, committee, we're voting on SB 2276, SD 1. Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Chang?
Aye.
Senator Decoit?
Aye.
Senator Nishihara?
Clarence, you're muted.
Aye. Did you hear me?
Yes, we recorded. I, I vote aye. Senator Sanbuenaventura?
Aye.
And Senator Favella, Senator Favella.
Senator Favella, did you vote on that one? You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, adopt a chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is Senate Bill 2280, Senate Draft One, relating to dental assistance. This would allow dental assistants to perform limited duties under the general supervision of a dentist in public health settings effective 1-1-2050. The chair recommends that we pass this with technical non-substantive amendments suggested by SMA and make the effective date 1-1-2023 so that people have an opportunity to get any CE that they might need or get their processes in place to allow this to happen. Any questions or concerns? If not, Senate Bill 2281, pass with the technical non-substantive amendments.
2280 or?
I'm sorry, 2280, dental assistance, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Okay, member, with all members present, are there any members voting with reservations or in opposition? Seeing none, your measure is adopted.
Thank you so much. The next measure is Senate Bill 2281, Senate Draft One. This establishes licensure requirements for school psychologists to be administered by the Board of Psychology, requires all school psychologists to be licensed by July 1, 2025, increases the composition of the Board of Psychology to include two psychologists, and it has a defective date. Chair believes that school psychologists should be appropriately licensed as are other professions working in our schools. So the recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments. Take HASP's amendment as to the, as an intra-measure effective January 1, 2023, and further amend the bill to have the Board of Psychology work with the Board of Education to develop a permanently, permanent licensing scheme for school psychologists in Hawaii. Take the Association of School Psychologists' recommendations regarding continuing education and make Senate Bill 2881, Senate Draft Two, effective 2-1-2022, 7-1-2022. With the Board, that's July, with the Board of Psychology and the Board of Education developing legislation for permanent requirements for licensure of school psychologists, report to the 2023 Legislature for consideration and adopting, adoption of a permanent licensing scheme for school psychologists in Hawaii. The report shall make a recommendation on any new board or to rename the current Board of Psychology to the Board of Clinical and School Psychologists, with membership including both clinical and school psychologists. SMA to make any conforming amendments based on these recommendations. Any questions or concerns? If not hearing none, the recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2281, Senate Draft One, with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Okay, committee members, all members being present, is anyone voting with reservations or in opposition? And, are we all here? Yeah, we are. Approved, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Next measure is Senate Bill 2439, relating to hearing aids. This requires health insurance policies and contracts issued after December 31, 2022 to provide coverage for purchases of medically necessary hearing aid models, including analog, digital, and digitally programmable, with standard features per, per hearing impaired ear every 36 months. The bill, as it's currently written, would become effective 1-1-2050. Chair recommends that we pass this with amendments. We will note in the committee report that there's already been an auditor's report on this issue. That fact needs to be included in the findings and purposes of this bill as well. We'll take the language of the original measure, that insurance carriers shall pay up to $1,500 of the cost per hearing aid for each hearing impaired ear. Conform language to this bill, in this bill, to the auditor's report. This measure is to implement recommendations of the auditor's report as a start. Wish health plans would just, this is just my editorial comment, it's not going to go on the committee report. Wish health plans would do the right thing and make hearing aids available for their members, especially children that need them. You just can't get forward in your life without it. And it shouldn't be up to the legislature to make the plans do the right thing. How can a child learn if the child can't hear? Ultimately, the cost to the family and the state of Hawaii will be much greater. So this measure needs amendments. Chair recommends that we take a recommendation of Peter Fritz and Eleanor McDonald. Delete the requirement for separate notice so long as health plans are required to highlight their hearing aid benefit for medically necessary individuals to correct hearing loss on their website and in their written information. Any questions or comments? If not, the recommendation is, of the chair, is to pass with the recommendations outlined, as well as technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency that SMA noted We're leaving the defective date? No, let's make it effective. Let's make it January 1, 2023. Any, any questions or comments, any concerns? If not, recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2281, Senate Draft One.
Was it 2439, Chair?
I'm sorry, I didn't cross that a little off. I'm looking at my computer and looking at my list, and they're not jiving. Yes, thank you, Senator Riviere. Recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2439, Senate Draft One, relating to hearing aids with amendments. Chair votes aye.
With all members present, are any members voting with reservations or in opposition? Seeing none, measure is adopted, Chair.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Senate Bill 2443, Senate Draft One, relating to pharmacy benefit managers. This addresses and defines pharmacy benefit manager practices, creates enforcement authority by the Insurance Commissioners to suspend or revoke a pharmacy benefit manager's registration and impose fines, repeals Section 328-106 Hawaii revised statutes, and has a defective effective date. Chair recommends that we pass with amendments noted in Hawaii Premier Care Association's amendments and the Insurance Commissioner's recommendations. Incorporate the concerns of ACS CAN in the SD 2. The goal is to set up a framework for access to life-saving treatment without PBM's overcharging or creating barriers to access to new drugs and treatments, especially in the cancer Any questions or comments? If not, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
With all members present, are any committee members voting with reservations or in opposition? Is Senator Nishihara here?
Clarence, are you still on the call?
Inexcused absence of Senator Nishihara.
I'm here, I'm here. I vote aye.
Okay.
Thank you. All members, all voting aye. Measure is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you. We missed seeing you, Clarence. Turn your, turn your video back on if you can. Okay, the next item on our agenda this morning is Senate Bill 2445, Senate Draft One, relating to physician's assistance. This expands the authorized scope of practice for a physician assistant, and it has a defective date. Chair recommends we pass this with technical non-substantive amendments recommended by SMA and a clean effective date of 1-1-2023. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, the recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2445 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye. Senator, Vice Chair Chang? Senator Decoit?
Aye.
Senator Nishihara?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Sanbuenaventura?
Aye.
And Senator Favella?
Aye.
Your measure is adopted, Chair.
Thank you. The next item is 2467, relating to mental health screenings. Requires that...
We're voting aye.
It's the rest of the vote sheets. He's doing such a good job. You're promoted. Or hired permanently, whichever you want.
It's my luck.
Senate Bill 2467, relating to mental health screenings. This requires one annual mental health screening be included in health insurance coverage for diagnosis and treatment of mental disorders, and it has a defective date of 1-1-2050. Chair wants to note in the committee report that this is not a new benefit, but a clarification of current practice, noting that an assessment of mental health is a critical tool in addressing chronic disease, especially since we're coming off of a pandemic and in individuals with intellectual development and disabilities, which often has a dual diagnosis. It's part of a continuum, continuum of care. And not a new benefit. HMS, HMSA clearly states that this kind of assessment is incorporated into their manuals, members' annual exam with their PCP. Chair recommends that, instead of passing this unamended, as I had originally noted, let's pass this clean and make the effective date 1-1-2023. The recommendation is to pass with a date change, with an amendment. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, recommendation is to pass 2467 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
With all members present, is anyone voting with reservations or in opposition? Seeing none, all in favor, measure adopted, Chair.
Thank you. The next measure on our agenda is Senate Bill 2592, relating to health. Defines clinical laboratory director to include certain physicians, licensed clinical laboratory scientists and pharmacists. Amends the definition of practice of pharmacy to include the ordering and performing of certain clinical, clinical laboratory improvement amendments, amendments waived tests. That is a mouthful. Chair recommends we pass this with clarifying amendments from Hawaii ANA, from Walgreens, and for the committee report, the clarifying comments of the Board of Pharmacy. Chair believes that our statutes need to evolve with time and continue education of pharmacists. None of our healthcare professionals need to be stuck in an old system when their practice, education, and demands of the profession are evolving and adapting to changing demands of current standards of practice that do not threaten patient care, but rather support it. So the recommendation is to pass with those clarifying amendments. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes, Chair votes aye. Pass with amendments. All members present, anyone voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none, all in favor, adopt a chair.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Senate Bill 2635, relating to the coverage for mammography. Requires insurers and mutual benefit societies to cover mandated services for mammography at least as favorably as coverage for other radiologic examinations. It currently has a defective date. Actually, DCCA Insurance Division requested that this measure be drafted. It will ensure a base level of coverage for breast cancer screening under current insurance mandates based on coverage for other radiological exams. And, and those of us who happen to be female understand the importance and the need for annual breast exams, and mammography is part of that. Chair recommends we pass this measure with a clean effective date of 1-1-2023. Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, Chair, you're, so you're amending the bill to effect the date, just?
Yeah, just to, just to make it a, a clean effective date, 1-1-2023. Any questions or comments? If not, recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2635 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Any members voting with reservations or in opposition? Seeing none, all in favor, adopt a chair.
Thank you. Our next measure is Senate Bill 2645, relating to behavioral health services. Allows standard telephone contacts for telehealth purposes related to behavioral health services. Recommendation is to note that this is not a new mandate, and that should be clear in the committee report and in the bill. This is merely allowing patients to access health care to which they are entitled in the easiest and best way possible, and it is in line with Medicare and Medicaid policies. And HMSA will get its appropriate reimbursement. Apparently, some of the testifiers were not aware that Medicare and Medicaid pay for these, so there's no reason why private health plans shouldn't as well. There are some services, like mammograms, that can't be done telephonically, but mental health assessments can. And why shouldn't we enable that to happen, just because some health plans are reluctant? Sorry, I started editorializing when I was writing these, these recommendations last night. I think it's time to put patients first, especially when it's not more costly to do something telephonically, and Medicare and Medicaid pay equally for telephonic and telehealth services. So we will note that in the committee report, as well as in the preamble of the measure. Okay, recommendation is to pass this measure with amendments, to note that this is not a new mandate, and if enacted, Senate Bill 2645 will save the plan's resources, and if we follow federal precedent, the providers will be reimbursed appropriately, and it will ultimately save the plan's money. We can ask the, the committee report writer to include some of that editorial language. Any questions or comments? Chair recommends that we pass... Why is my screen not moving back up?
2645.
Yeah, 2645. With amendments, right?
Yep.
Okay, there it is. Yeah, the recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2645 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
All members present, anyone voting with reservations or in opposition? Hearing none, all in favor, adopt a chair.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda this morning is Senate Bill 2661, relating to midwives. Establishes the home birth task force to investigate outstanding issues relating to the regulatory scheme created by Act 32, Session Laws of Hawaii 2019. Chair's had a lot of experience with this issue and recommends that we defer it indefinitely. It's just never going to be any happier medium than the one, than the one currently in the statute, in Chair's opinion. The next item on our agenda is Senate Bill 2829, relating to mental health. Establishes provisional or associate-level licensure requirements for marriage and family therapists, mental health counselors, and psychologists, and authorizes insurance reimbursements in certain circumstances. Allows for psychologist-licensed applicants to sit for the licensing exam before completing other requirements, and has a defective date. Members, this bill needs a little bit more work in Chair's opinion, and I'm going to defer this measure to follow up with some of the testifiers until 2023, 2022, February 23rd, 2022, 9:30, 10 o'clock, we made it, in conference, conference room 229. And let's see, I think we are, we about at the end of, no, we've got more. We have more. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Senate Bill 3118, relating to tobacco products. This bans the sale of flavored tobacco products and mislabeled e-liquid products. Recommendation is to pass with tech amendments from SMA and Department of Health. Ensure that the ban is all flavored tobacco products, e-liquids, including menthol, which is used to make smoking and vaping less harsh, and there are plinies of studies that in minority communities, allowing menthol has increased addiction of new smokers to e-cigs and regular cigarettes, because it masks the harshness by the flavor of the menthol, and it has led to a lot of addiction in a lot of minority communities. So the recommendation is to pass with technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consist, consistency, as well as the amendments from SMA. Those amendments were from SMA and the Department of Health. Any questions or comments? If not?
So I will be voting with reservations on this because of its overbreadth with amendments. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, the recommendation is to pass 20, I'm sorry, 3118, Senate Draft One, with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Okay, SB 3118, SD 1, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Chang? Senator Decoit?
Aye.
Senator Nishihara?
Aye.
Okay, I vote with reservations. Senator Sanbuenaventura votes with reservations. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Chair.
Thank you. The next item is Senate Bill 3136, relating to electronic prescription accountability system. This was part of the governor's package. Men, subsection 329-101D Hawaii revised statutes should require that a dispenser of controlled substance report the filing of a controlled substance prescription to the state's electronic prescription accountability system in real time, or report zero, not less than once every seven days if no controlled substance prescriptions are filled. This measure has a defective date. Chair recommends that we pass this measure as is and leave in the defective date for now. Any questions or comments? If not, Chair votes aye.
SB 3136, SD 1, passing without amendments. Chair votes aye. Of all members present, anyone voting with reservations or in opposition? Seeing none, all in favor, adopt a chair.
Thank you. Next item is Senate Bill 3160, relating to psilocybin. Establishes the therapeutic psilocybin working group to examine the medicinal and therapeutic effects of psilocybin and develop a long-term strategic plan to develop, I'm sorry, to ensure the availability of therapeutic psilocybin or psilocybin-based products that are safe, accessible, and affordable for adults 21 years of age or over. It also has a defective date. Chair recommends that we pass with amendments to include the addition of two MDs with a specialty in substance abuse and psychiatry to be included on the working group. And the question, the measure already has a defective date on it. Any questions or comments? If not, the recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 3160, Senate Draft One, with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. All other members present, anyone voting with reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Favella? Any other members with reservations or opposition? I'm sorry, is Senator Nishihara?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Noting the reservations of Senator Favella and all other members voting aye. Your measure is adopted, Chair.
Senate Bill 3180, Senate Draft One, relating to healthcare. This establishes the rural health task force within the Department of Health to make recommendations on registered nurse recruitment and retention in rural areas of East Mai, Molokai, and Lanai. The, after looking at Department of Health's testimony, which notes that this measure duplicates the Hawaii State Center for Nursing, also notes that there may be insufficient time to convene a task force, develop actionable recommendations, propose legislation, and complete the report by the end of 2022. Hawaii ANA also agrees that this would be duplicative. So the recommendation is going to be to defer this measure indefinitely, but the chair will compete, on behalf of the committee, will communicate with the Center for Nursing and ask them to make registered nurse recruitment and retention in rural areas a priority, taking a look to see if there is legislation that they would recommend to facilitate that for the next session. Any, any questions or concerns? Chair Decoit, are you all right with that? Because that was your bill.
I'm good at that. Chair, thank you very much for considering the rural areas and helping with the recruitment... the, with the rural areas and, uh, helping with the recruitment of, and the priorities. Not a problem, Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next measure is Senate Bill thirty-three eighty-two relating to prescriptions. Allows the utilization of post office box for controlled substance prescriptions by amending the definition of address under chapter three twenty-nine HRS and make, and it is effective one-one-two thousand and fifty. Um, Chair recommends that, um, we move this forward with, um, the defective effective date and pass it over to the House for their consideration. Any questions or concerns?
I'm sorry, was that, uh, with amendments or?
Unamended.
Unamended, pardon me.
Because it already has a defective date in.
Okay, so, um, I have a question regarding this, the P O boxes. Um, can we put in the police, I mean, in the committee report that the rural routes, um, is also included as part of the P O boxes? Because those are put up by the P O box, by the post office.
Okay, we will.
Um, yeah, so tho, those would include R Rs and H Cs.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, in that, in that instance, why don't we go ahead, pass it with amendments? We'll put that, uh, not only in the committee report, but we'll put it in the language of the measure so it's really clear because the measure will go forward, the committee report might, uh, fall by the wayside.
Um, I appreciate that, thank you.
And, uh, I, I just want to, uh, share Kaiser, um, permanencies of information. Uh, it says currently if a controlled substance prescription has a post office box address before dispensing, pharmacist must verify the patient's ID, note the ID number on the prescription, um, and change the address if, um, there's a physical address already on file. So, let's move this measure, um, with, uh, with some amendments to include in the definition of address, the rural route. Uh, and I think, uh, that would make it consistent and it would make it clear that we want uh, all of those opportunities for getting, uh, prescriptions to patients as best as we can. How's that Senator Sam Buena Ventura?
Uh, y, yes, I appreciate that because, um, what Kaiser says is true. Whenever the street addresses are there for the emergency, the EMS to be able to come to us, but the post office, uh, will not deliver to the street address, so there are, there are problems. So, yes, I appreciate your, um, your amending this bill, thank you.
Okay, Chair recommends we pass this measure with amendments and give it a clean effective date of one-one-two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions or concerns? Recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, all other members present, anyone voting with reservations or in opposition, seeing none, all in favor, adopted Chair.
Okay, our next bill and last bill on the agenda is relating to human remains. This was introduced by Senator Kidani and Senator Keo Ho Kaloli, uh, weighed in as well. It includes the use of traditional native Hawaiian burial practice in the treatment and disposal of human remains, including the use of water cremation or alkaline hydrolysis. Requires alkaline hydrolysis facilities to be licensed by the Department of Health. Requires alkaline hydrolysis facility operators to be licensed and undergo operator training. Uh, Chair recommends that we pass this measure with the texts, with texts that were identified by SMA and with an amendment proposed by Senator Kidani, uh, Senator Keo Ho Kaloli concurring and by Fisher and Associates LLC. Specify that it is the Department of Health on page four, line three and line seven. Delete licensure for hydrolysis, hydrolysis facilities. Require operator training and compliance with Department of Health Title eleven and keep the defective effective date to, uh, make sure that it, there is, uh, further uh, conversation on this measure. Um, and we're going to take Senator Kidani's suggested amendment. Delete section two, subsection eight to adopt Fisher and Associates LLC language. The sterile wastewater shall be just tar, discharged and shoot the sewer system as approved by the counties. Allison, did I get all of those? Okay, any questions or concerns? If not, the recommendation on Senate Bill two thousand and eight twenty-eight is to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Oh, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, sorry, um, did we, um, did on that bill, um, is it the mortaries who do embalming and cremation also not be required to have license? Was that the add-in to, was that the Senator?
No. No, um, babe. They have to have training established by the department and hold a valid certification issued by the department. The department certifies, they don't license. And we're trying to make the distinction that it is the Department of Health that does this and not, not DCCA. So that's why the languaging was a little bit tricky here.
Okay, got it, thanks Chair.
Okay. So the recommendation is to pass Senate Bill twenty-eight twenty-five, twenty-eight twenty-eight with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, all other members present, anyone voting with reservations or in opposition? Hearing none, your measure is adopted Chair.
Okay, thank you, members, for joining us this morning. We are at the end of our agenda and we are adjourned.